Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Mrs. Burns.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Cirillo?
Right here.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman is absent with prior notice. Mr. Kovitz?
Here.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Sporny is also absent with prior notice. And Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, everybody. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, matters related to litigation, and matters related to transportation, a student settlement, and potential employment of interim business administrator, director of education, operations, and independent contractors. Mrs. Burns, any announcements, please?
No announcements.
Mr. Bowman, superintendent's report.
So, good evening, everybody. As we all know, tonight's the last board meeting for two of our board members, and I wanted to take a few minutes to recognize their service and contribution to our district. These individuals approach their volunteer work like it's a full-time job with extraordinary dedication to our schools. They're citizens whose decisions affect our children and help build our community. As we know, school boards are charged with making decisions that can sometimes be quite difficult or require sifting through a great deal of information. The Board here in Neshamity oversees and governs the school system of 9,800 students, over 1,300 employees, and approximately a $200 million budget. They contribute countless hours each year providing leadership to the Neshamity School District. They become deeply involved in the community activities and spend many hours at extracurricular events. Through their dedication, governance, advocacy, and collaboration with school district staff, they've helped build future education in Neshamity. School board members are rarely thanked for this volunteer service. Remember, volunteer service, we don't pay them anything to do this job. We'd like to take this opportunity to show our appreciation for these servant leaders and thank them for the work that we do together to prepare today's students to be tomorrow's leaders. So, the first board member we recognize tonight is Mr. Adam Kovitz. Adam has served for six years on the Board. He's served in multiple board committees over the years. He currently serves on the Educational Development Committee, a personnel committee. He's the representative for the Neshamity Education Foundation, and he is also the representative, one of the representatives, on the Joint Board for the Bucks County Tech School. Our second board member that we recognize tonight is Mr. Paul Cirillo. Paul has served on the Board for the last four years. He currently is the Chair of the Policy Committee, serves on the Facilities and Planning Committee, he's a member of several personnel committees, and the Discipline Committee, and Paul also serves as the Board's representatives to the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. So, if you could both join me at the podium, please? Either side, either side is fine. So, as a small token of our appreciation, we have some Neshamity commemorative plates for you. If we could get a picture together, please? Thank you. Please be sure to enjoy. Please ensure all the extra time you will soon both have, and thank you both for your service to our kids and our community, and congratulations on a great four years and six years.
Mrs. Burns, has anybody signed up for public comment?
There were no signups.
Okay. Moving, right along. I'd like to make a master motion for Routine Matters, 2.01 Minutes, 2.02 Treasurer's Report, 2.03 Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases, 2.04 Investments, and 2.05 Exonerations. There's a motion on the floor. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Vote passes seven zero. 3.01 Appointments. Resolved that the Neshamity Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments of administrative staff. There is one name on the Board, Mr. Sean Haynes. There's been a motion on the floor. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Vote passes seven zero.
Come on up to the podium, Mr. Haynes. I wanted to just take a minute to congratulate and welcome Sean to the Neshamity School District. Obviously, as we know, Sean is replacing Paul Meehan, who was a tremendous loss to the district, but we are beyond excited to get Sean as part of our cabinet-level team here in Neshamity. So, welcome to Neshamity, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm incredibly excited to be here, very excited to join the Neshamity community. I know I have tremendous shoes to fill, but I do look forward to the opportunity to work alongside Mr. Meehan upon my arrival. So, again, thank you very much to the Board, and I'm excited.
Mr. Sullivan, please.
I'd like to make a master motion to approve Item 4.01 Retirement's Resignations and Assignments, 4.02 Appointments, 4.03 Leaves of Absence, 4.04 Sixth Period Appointments, 4.05 Tenure Awards, 4.06 Revised Returns from Leave, 4.07 Co-Curricular Appointments. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. There's a motion on the floor. May I have a second, please? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Vote passes seven zero. Mr. Cirillo, please.
I'd like to make a master motion to approve Items 5.01 Retirement's Resignations and Assignments, 5.02 Appointments, 5.03 Leaves of Absence, 5.04 Revised Leaves of Absence. I do want to call out, though, three names on retirements. One, Kenneth Flogel, about 35.4 years of service. Diane Loanowski, 28 years as an IA over at Tonka. Mr. Flogel was a carpenter for facilities and will be missed as well. And finally, Ms. Kimberly Whitlock, Secretary here at Maple Point, 29 years. Thank you all for your service to Neshamity over that time. Oh, I'm sorry, and 5.05 Ancillary Appointments, because I can't read.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. There's a motion on the floor. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Vote passes seven zero. Mr. Rodriguez, please.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbeck. I'd like to make a motion to 6.01 Cora Creek Elementary Change Order Number Three with Urid Construction Extra Fencing. Whereas the Neshamity Board of School Directors approved and hired an architect and construction management company for the new Maple Point Elementary project, and whereas in construction project there may be change orders which need to be approved, now therefore be resolved that the Neshamity School District authorizes the district business administrator to authorize the change order with Spisel Architecture Group Incorporated and Urid Construction Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $22,611.7.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. There's a motion on the floor. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Vote passes seven zero. Ms. Lafferty, please.
I'd like to make a motion 6.02 Acceptance of Donation. Whereas the Neshamity Kids Club has offered to donate a Gaga play pit, including floor covering, for Schweitzer Elementary School valued not exceeding $3,699. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Neshamity Board of School Directors hereby approves to accept the aforementioned donation from the Neshamity Kids Club.
Thank you, Ms. Lafferty. There's a motion on the floor. May I have a second, please? Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any questions, comments, or concerns? I would like to just comment and say thank you very much for the donation to Neshamity Kids Club. They typically donate a lot of resources to our schools, and it's greatly appreciated. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Vote passes seven zero. 6.03 Interim Business Manager. Motion to approve David Soblowski as the interim business manager pursuant to the final form of an agreement with Chester County RES at a per diem rate of $800 per day and authorizing the acting superintendent to execute the final form of the agreement on the district's behalf which shall be subject to review and approval by the Board, by the district solicitor. See, I didn't get a Smith either. There's been a motion on the floor. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Vote passes seven zero. Mr. Allen, please.
Thank you, Ms. Hollenbeck. I'd like to place a motion on the floor, 6.04 Consulting Agreement. Whereas the Neshamity School District, through the direction and oversight of the superintendent, will assign special district-level projects to educational consultant Paul Meehan. And whereas the Education Staffing Service, ESS, has onboarded Paul Meehan as an administrative consultant who will assist the Neshamity School District in the area of administrative consultation and oversight on large-scale district projects in the areas of administration, operations, and facilities. And whereas the utilization of the ESS consulting service will be added assurance that the Neshamity School District will be able to fulfill goals and expectations of district upcoming and future projects, initiatives for students and district facilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Neshamity Board of School Directors hereby approves the hiring of Paul Meehan as an administrative consultant through ESS, subject to an amendment to the ESS contract in a form approved by the district solicitor. Be it further resolved that the solicitor and superintendent of schools be authorized to execute a final agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. There's a motion on the floor. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any questions, comments, or concerns? I'm glad that Mr. Meehan is still be staying with us under a different capacity. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Vote passes seven zero. Mr. Sullivan, please.
6.05 Renovation of the Bathroom and Nurses' Suite at Maple Point Middle School. Whereas the Neshamity Board of School Directors recognizes the need to install a student lift and ensure the Maple Point Nurses' Office Bathroom Facility is functional for all students, and whereas to ensure the bathroom facility will be compliant with the American with Disabilities Act after the upgrades are installed. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Neshamity School Board approves the proposal from Spisel Architects to design and prepare construction documents for the purpose of bidding in order to bring back bids for Board approval in the amount not to exceed $11,600.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. There's a motion on the floor. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Vote passes seven zero. Ms. Lafferty, please.
I'd like to make a motion 7.01 Student Settlement Agreement. Whereas the Neshamity School District has outlined a private and confidential agreement with the family of student number seven, XXXX8. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Neshamity Board of School Directors hereby approves providing for the educational programming as specified in said agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Lafferty. There's a motion on the floor. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Vote passes seven zero. Mr. Kovitz, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 702 Overnight Trips. Whereas according to Board Policy 231, trips extending overnight are permitted by authorization of the Board of School Directors only. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Neshamity Board of School Directors hereby approves the following overnight trips. There are seven of them.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. There's a motion on the floor. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Ms. Burns, we need to take a roll call on this, please? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Sullivan?
I need to abstain from Item Number Four and Number Five, since my daughter's on the cheerleading team.
Six yes and one abstention.
Thank you. Mr. Cirillo?
Before considering this motion, please note that after the first reading of Policies 103 and 104, a reference to the most recent Pennsylvania regulations was added to each of these policies. The purpose of these changes was to ensure proper interpretation of the policies in accordance with the most recent regulations under the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. So, I'd now like to make a motion for 8.01 Second Reading of Policy. Whereas the first reading of Policy Series 100 was completed at the November 8, 2023 Public Work Session Meetings, and whereas the following Board Policies are being recommended by the Policy Committee for a second reading and final adoption into the Neshamity School District Policy Manual, now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamity School Board of Directors hereby approves the policies noted below for final adoption into the Neshamity School District Policy Manual, and they are Policies 103 Discrimination/Harassment Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Students, 103.1 Non-Discrimination Qualified Students with Disabilities, 104 Discrimination/Harassment Title IX Sexual Harassment Affecting Staff, 113.1 Discipline of Students with Disabilities, 113.2 Behavior Support, 113.4 Confidentiality of Special Education Student Information, Number 137 Home Education Programs, 137.1 Extracurricular Participation by Home Education Students, 137.2 Participation in Co-Curricular Activities and Academic Courses by Home Education Students, 137.3 Participation in Career and Technical Education Programs by Home Education Students, and 801 Electronic Data Storage.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. There's a motion on the floor. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Vote passes seven zero. That brings us to the closing of the meeting. Is there any other board business? Public comment? Anybody in the public would like to come up and make a comment? Board comment?
I just want to comment that it's been a pleasure to serve with Adam and Paul on this Board, and you will never forget you were on the School Board during a pandemic. So, and it was an interesting time, but it's been a pleasure to serve with both of you.
I also wanted to, you know, to know what Mr. Sullivan said, and it's been a pleasure working with both of you over the last year. Also wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you enjoy your time with your loved ones and look forward to the new year, too.
I just wanted to say I enjoyed working with you on the committees as well and sitting next to you. It's been my pleasure. I've learned a lot from both of you, so thank you. Oh, and welcome to Mr. Haynes. Oh, and I actually want to thank John Allen for talking about the veterans each year. And so, this was the first year that I went, and Marty was there and Callan was there. And it was so emotional, and it was just so well done. So, I was thrilled to be there. I won't say participate, because that wasn't about us. It was just, it was really fabulous, and the whole Maple Point community did such an amazing job. So, thank you.
You're welcome. I was not able to be there, and I'm so glad others on the Board had a chance to participate. That's, it is an awesome summer, and I genuinely miss not getting there, the years that I've missed it. Paul, I wanted to thank you for our time on the, particularly the Facility Committee, not to throw names out, but Steve, you know, our battles with him back and forth. Will never forget how much glass is necessary in the building of an elementary school, going back and forth. But truly, it has been a pleasure, and our conversations back and forth among many board issues, I have enjoyed every one of them, even when they were unpleasant and things we were, you know, upset over. I will definitely miss that. So, again, thank you for your service to the community. And Adam, our time on the Tech Board has been memorable. I mean, we went through the end of the COVID. We didn't always see eye to eye on how to get our students in the school. You know, I'm still mad at you about that, but that's okay. But no, Neshamity has been well-served by Mr. Kovitz's input over there, and I shall miss you, and I'll miss you on this Board. So, again, thank you, and enjoy your retirement, such as it is.
I just wanted to thank the both of you as well, from both a community standpoint, being a community member and an administrator here. You both have been a pleasure to work with, and I think, most importantly, I firmly believe that every decision that you've both made have been grounded in what's best for our students, and that's all we can ask. So, thank you.
Before I get to the Board members, I too want to wish Mr. Haynes a welcome, look forward to working with you, and I look forward to still working with Mr. Meehan as well. I know he thinks he's going to hide somewhere, but we'll find him. Mr. Kovitz and Mr. Cirillo, it has been a pleasure to work with you, Adam for six years, Paul for four, and this past year as Vice President with me up here. I appreciate it. We've done a lot of great things for the district, and I'm really proud to say that I've worked with both of you, and good luck with getting all of your time back. I'm not sure what you guys are going to know what to do with getting back two or three days a week. I also would like to tell everybody to have a happy Thanksgiving. I hope you're able to spend it with your loved ones or doing something that is meaningful to you. The holidays are coming right around the corner, so I hope everybody gets to enjoy them. Future meetings? We don't have too many future meetings before the end of the year. We do have a Business Operations Meeting next Wednesday in this room at 6:30. I believe we're going to be starting to talk preliminary about the budget. And then, Monday, December 4th, is the reorganization meeting of the School Board, where we will be wishing, where we will be swearing in two new members of the Board, so that should be a fun event. And last but not least, rounding out the year on December 12th, we have a Facilities and Planning Committee meeting here at 6:30 in this room to continue to go over the progress of all of the projects that we have. With that, sadly, do you want to do the honors of 9.05?
Well, actually, I just wanted to, did you want to say?
I thought you said, oh, my God.
That's okay. No, I, this is, you know, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for my time on the Board. I especially want to thank Jason, Michelle, and Paul. You guys are invaluable to this district. I don't know if the community realizes it. If they don't, shame on them. You guys are amazing, and this community is lucky to have you. As the rest of the members of the Board, I hate you all. I'm so happy. Now, I will not, anybody who knows me over the last several months knows that I'm completely not going to miss this at all. Mr. Bowman's laughing. He understands it very well. What I will miss is I'm going to miss the people. Really, I will. The past Board members, Steve, really isn't a past Board member, actually. He never leaves. He is, he's just a reoccurring force of nature, but a heck of a good guy and very committed to this district. I actually learned a lot from Steve, but Marty, you've been great this whole time. A lot of conversations and things of that nature to lead me off the ledge from time to time. Tina, same thing. Thank you. I appreciate your leadership. John, you are probably the most dedicated School Board member, and that's not to take anything away from anybody here. Your dedication to this school district and to the Tech School is amazing, and having one child who went through technical program after high school and is successful without the college degree in that sense because of that, I am so happy that you represent Neshamity in doing that. That is a big thing, and we here at Neshamity have never discouraged people from looking at alternative educational streams rather than your traditional college. Lish, great time the last few years. I appreciate your attention to detail on policy. I didn't have to do anything. It was great. I'd come in, and you read it, you know, infinitely more than I did, and I would just sit there and go, whatever she said, we're good. Adam, thank you. You drug me into this. I don't know if I should thank you or, truly, you're a great gentleman. I didn't intend to go around, but everybody does mean so much to me. Great guy, highly intelligent. He's a rocket scientist. Don't let the outward appearance fool you. A man of many talents, and I truly, working with you as well as a neighbor's been great. And Carlos, same thing. I greatly appreciate the short time we had together. Not going to miss this whole break and roll, but all of you people, I certainly hope I can say that I've left here with friends. And on that, Mr. Haynes, you're coming into an amazing family of people here. Like I said, Michelle, Paul, and Jay, you definitely made the right choice, and I think Neshamity made the right choice in you as well. But that's it. Thank you so much. Wow. I don't know how I can beat that. Wow, I don't know how I can beat that. Unfortunately, I'm not a man of few words, but I will do my best to keep this to no more than an hour. Just kidding. So, yeah. First of all, just to get this out of the way, for the last time, I really appreciate the Neshamene Kids Club. I have no idea what a Gaga Play Pit is, nor did I ever think I'd ever say that in public. I feel kind of silly doing that, but, you know, the Neshamene Kids Club is an amazing, is amazing organization. I'm honored to have a son who works for them and is devoted to helping our amazing kids of that age. So it's a wonderful thing. I've, a lot, a lot can change in six years. And I, when I started as an elected volunteer for this organization, I was consulting, I was my own boss, and it was very interesting. But I knew, I really wanted to learn about public education. I really believe very strongly in it. My three sons came up through this organization. I wanted to, I wanted to serve, and I wanted to learn everything I could. And I did. And, you know, through Mr. Jones, one of our former superintendents, he kind of helped pave the way for me to get into education. And it was really a wonderful thing. So I thank Joe Jones for his role in that. And just meeting all the fantastic people along the way. I've become friends with all these people that you see up here. And it always amazes me and floors me how dedicated the people are in this district to really doing everything that they can for the kids in our district. And that, it doesn't, it's not lost on me. And Mr. Haynes, you are walking into a really great organization, and it's my hope that you will give everything you have to that. It's also my hope that someone on this board takes on that mantle of like STEM education, because I can't talk about it enough. It's just one of those things that really means a lot to me. So with that, I'm moving on. I'm certainly enjoying my role nowadays as a teacher. I love doing it. I love, I love teaching my nerds, as I call them, they're fantastic kids. And I hope that we'll continue to grow kids just on a larger level and teach them to accept the challenges that, you know, the future has to offer them and all that. So, but to everybody here, thank you for this opportunity. To my constituents, thank you so much for putting me in this position to say what I'm saying right now. And I appreciate everyone, and I look forward to, I look forward to our successors. And congratulations to the two board members that got to continue. I look forward to seeing what our successors can do and what the new board's going to do for this amazing community. So thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
On that note, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you, everybody, have a good night, happy Thanksgiving.